The approval of minutes for the special session is February 20th, 2018. Mike Marsh made the motion and Butch Cowherd in the second. Everyone in favor, show hands. Public hearing regarding the removal of stop signs at the following locations. Hope and North Seventh Street, South Tenth Street and Clark Street, and Grace Street and Anne Street. The public hearing is now open. Do you want to speak something?
Thank you.
Four or against?
I'm looking, I'm definitely for it.
Forward move.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, thank you.
This is, uh, this is an item that I thought that would best to go to both the public and council. Instead of me trying to make that kind of decision. Uh, council put it up by a vote, put the, uh, those three stop signs up by a vote. And, uh, also there's citizens affected, you know, uh, for, for against it, you know. So, um, if anyone has any comments, this is the time to say, you know, if we do remove these stop signs, uh, we want to do the citizens' input.
I think Grace and Anne, you can take that stop sign and walk off with it. Yes. I hate that stop sign, it's dangerous there. Because people don't always stop. So I don't know, I don't know if I put Anne on to Grace. I just have to wait and hope they stop because they just don't always. So, please take that with you. There with Grace.
And they check them out for four hours.
They are three, where did possible message?
I just, I don't live in Crockett, but I'm, I used to manage, I used to manage the city years ago for North Kentucky. But to remove a stop sign, we had to do a study on it to see the traffic patterns and amount of traffic. And I'm sure the sheriff and the policemen will go, if you have an accident and the public doesn't know it, uh, the city's like, you fall, I'm just, uh, I'm just a servant. What I'm here saying, just taking away that side. I'm always there to do a study on that, kind of, the traffic pattern before we make that.
A study wasn't, a study wasn't done to put it in place. And it was, it was used by the, um, input at, at that time of law enforcement or, uh, citizens that requested it. And so that's, once again, we're using the same manner to ask, ask the public. We're not saying yay or nay. We're asking the public what they want. And then council have to vote on it.
And it's not a, it's not a, it's, it's stopping at a road going straight through at a T. So it's not like, it, it's just like every other street in town that when you stop at the T coming in to a main road going through, uh, you're just having, going down the main road going through, you're having to stop. And so it's not like there's a four-way.
It's not a four-way, it's just a.
Any other comments?
Police department has no objection to your removal of all three.
Public hearing is now closed. Motion number six, considering approved approval of the stop signs at the following locations. Hope and North Seventh Street, South Tenth and Clark Street, and South Grace and Anne Street. The motion's been made by Butch Cowherd, first, the motion's been made by Butch Cowherd, seconded by Darrell Jones. Everyone in favor? Public hearing regarding the submission of an application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Public hearing is now open.
Mayor Council, this is a required item, um, as we move forward with the process of a planning grant. Uh, the last, uh, planning grant that we have on file, uh, was done in nineteen eighty-one. This is a community improvement program which performs studies of multiple different facilities and services of the city of Crockett as it relates to us. And, uh, gives us a current status and, and a status of where we should be. And it helps develop a plan over the next ten years to get to those, uh, goals that are identified. The goals identified are, um, streets, water, capital improvement programs, our, uh, city thoroughfare, a central business, business district. Park, uh, department will be studying. Um, the Parks Department is, having a master plan for the Parks Department will open us up. The grant that, uh, we're going to be getting results on this month, whether we get it or not for our Parks Department, is capped at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With this master plan in place, we can increase that up to five hundred thousand dollars for their parks. So, um, economic development and then, um, stormwater, those are all items that council and the public right now could give us input on what direction they want us to, to, to study and to, um, to look at as we move forward with the planning grant. The planning grant for fifty-five thousand dollars is what they'll pay up, um, pay up to.
Is there any comments?
I have a question. When you say the planning grant, is this salaried or is this volunteered?
Neither, we will, we would, uh, contract with a third party engineering firm, um, that will come in and perform the study.
And they would get the fifty thousand, you say fifty-five thousand?
Yes. That goes, that goes towards the cost of an engineering firm to provide the study.
Well, I don't know, this seems like a lot, a lot of money for a study that's going to include studying the park and see whether to improve the park. I gotta look, we know it needs to be improved, so why do we need to study that? And I think the other, it's like the water?
A, a lot of this is a prioritization to give council and, and city leaders some direction on what our priority needs are and to help develop costs. They will go in with this study and will help develop costs so we can budget our future budgets accordingly.
But aren't some of you intelligent people that's already on the council?
We're not, none of us are engineers, though.
Do you have to be an engineer though to know what the needs are?
To put the stamp on the paper, yes ma'am.
You do have to have staff of engineers.
For us to be able to go out and bid and, and. It will help, uh, it will help develop a grading criteria for our streets and know which ones as well. Uh, these need to be addressed before these. This, this road has a base infrastructure that needs to be addressed. This one just has a top beginning asphalt or curves and so forth. Um, the fifty-five thousand dollars is not out of city budget. That is money that is gonna go through our city if we do not apply for it.
Okay. I guess my, my concern is, we can ride on these streets, we know where most of these streets are, that since Crockett is poor, why spend so much money on someone telling us what we need? Most of us already know what the needs are in here in Crockett.
Yes ma'am. That's, that's, like I said, that's fifty-five thousand dollars that's gonna go to another community if we do not apply for it. It's not our money. So that's why we want the money here.
And it's a.
Just we are for it.
But it's just a grant, so we're not, since the engineers are going to put a stamp on it, so we are people, we're really not benefiting from it. We know what our needs are, so we're gonna give this fifty-five thousand to the engineers with a stamp on what we already know. Just set the scene and make a lot of sense to them.
Cause I just one question again, just from my observation, would it be prudent to hire a city engineer? I've never seen a city without, uh, a, 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 a own engineer. If you don't have, we don't have a city engineer.
Not, not personally hired, we contracted an engineer. We don't have the, the.
I, I, I just wonder if it'd be more cost effective to have your own guy that should go out and do a study and stamp it and be done and keep the money and help.
Yeah, if, if, if the city, if the city budget could support a full-time engineer on, on, on the city's staff, that would be prudent to do that. Uh, but understanding, uh, our budget and where we are financially as a city, it's just not prudent at this time. And I understand what you're saying, uh, that it would save money if you already have somebody to do that.
But you think about the grants, you pay professional services out of the grants.
And in, and in doing that, that gives us, uh, as a council, because none of us are professionals in, in those areas of expertise. And so that gives us a sense of direction. You know, we have, we got common sense in a lot of things. But if we're gonna really, uh, move forward with addressing some of the issues, uh, that our city is faced with, then we need to have a broad picture of what those need to prioritize and, and then to budget for them and move forward with trying to get things done. As the lady over here, I forget her name, was talking about streets, uh, that's all part of that study. And so we need that in order to give us a sense of direction as to what we need to do, where we need to address, one of the worst case scenarios as far as, uh, the needs of the cities.
So, sorry, basically, I'm summer, by the way. Um, basically, to make sure I'm understanding correctly, right now what we're considering or what you guys are discussing is applying for the grant to help with the city. Um, not whether or not what it's gonna go towards or how we're gonna organize that, that'll come later, but yay or nay, yes, get the grant, what on?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, uh, let me, let me invent here then, uh, we're not sitting back waiting on them to do an analysis of all of the infrastructure of our city to determine, uh, what needs to be done. We already have some money to put aside.
Right.
Uh, budgeting for streets. But we need to know, uh, and get a study now so we'll know exactly which are the worst ones and what we need to address. I've been through your neighborhood and, uh, it's not my area, uh, that I've been elected to serve, but, uh, I understand and I get it, you know, as you ride on, in your nice automobiles on streets that really do need to be replaced rather than bad. And so that's what we'll do our best to do. But understanding the budgetary restraints and things that we're dealing with as a city that many citizens don't understand and don't know, you know, we have a lot of challenges. Uh, that's not an excuse for complacency, but there's a lot of challenges that the city is facing budgetarily speaking that we have to get done.
Any more comments?
Yeah. I have a question. Has the city ever had an engineer on staff? Um, I don't know, when, have they ever had one?
In prior years, yes ma'am.
Like five years back maybe?
I believe it was the eighties, nineties.
Prior, prior, prior years.
Public hearing is now closed. Now we're going to consider and approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crockett, Texas authorizing the filing of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture and authorizing the mayor to act as the city's executive officer and authorizing representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Do I have a motion? The motion has been made by, uh, Butch Cowherd, seconded by, by Councilman Jackson. Everyone in favor, show hands. The next one is consider and approve a resolution by the City Council of the City of Crockett Designating Authorizing Signatures, um, documents and documents for requesting fund pertaining to the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, contract number seven-two-one-seven-one-three-two.
This is the, this is the resolution on the downtown revitalization grant for the sidewalks that we were approved for. Just replacing, uh, some sidewalks downtown. Uh, this resolution is in regards to, uh, allowing the mayor to sign, uh, draw documents and other documents that are required for this grant.
Mike Marsh has made, uh, the motion, we accept this, and Orange Jackson has, uh, in the second, everybody in favor, show hands. Thank you. Number eleven, consider and approve. Okay. Okay, number ten, consider and approve Designating April as Fair Housing Month.
Uh, no, this is a, um, as a requirement for these grant purposes through, uh, the CDP, uh, fund, uh, we, um, there's certain requirements in, uh, designating, uh, a month as our fair housing month is one of the requirements. Uh, April being the one that has been, uh, was designated last year as well. Or, uh, pay of the civil rights, so this could be as a part of the grants required process.
I made a motion to consider and approve April as, uh, fair housing.
Councilman Jackson has made the motion and, uh, Councilman Cowherd, uh, seconded. Everybody in favor? Okay, motion number eleven, consider and approve authorizing professional services for a procurement of the twenty eighteen Community Enhancement Fund.
Uh, Mayor Council, this is a, another grant program, uh, uh, grant, uh, program that will allow us to, uh, request up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards some health services in our community. Um, we will basically be, uh, utilized as a pass group for this grant, not with us. Um, if, uh, I did speak with the hospital district manager and a couple of board members and they, um, expressed some interest, uh, the grant, um, if, if approved, the grant match would be funded by them, uh, by the hospital district. So it has to be for a nonprofit or government entity of healthcare. To provide, to, to purchase equipment to be able to provide a new service that they do not currently provide. So a new service would require a specialized type of machine. This grant could go up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that purchase. And as a requirement, the grant, they would pay the, the twenty-five percent match, um, as well as guarantee this, the, the grant purposes, that they would provide this service for the next five years. For us to move forward, they'll have to sign a letter of intent with, uh, meeting those requirements.
What does it mean, uh, pertaining to that? Do, uh, Hill Murray Clinic, who owns that? Clinic?
The CEO, the CEO of Murray, the pre-cumpany.
Yeah.
I did not know. I tried to reach out to them last week. I called a couple of numbers. Um, I know someone that does, um, serve on their, serve on their board. And so I've reached out to them as well.
Well, I, I was just thinking as you was talking about, of course, we don't have a hospital at, at the moment, hopefully that will get, uh, reestablished, uh, percentage of holding, since, uh, I was thinking, uh, that there are a lot of people that use, uh, that clinic and it would certainly, uh, benefit them greatly if they were able to access a grant of that, uh, amount or a portion of that to assist in meeting the, uh, overwhelming demand of, uh, the people, uh, that utilize that clinic.
From understanding they are, uh, uh, could be candidates for this grant as well, uh, it has to be nonprofit or government, depending if you're not a private, uh, firm. So them along with the hospital district, as far as I'm aware, those two would be, uh, two that would be, as long as they provide the match.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with the hospital district benefiting from that, but I would, I would, uh, think that, uh, that clinic, uh, would be served greatly if they could have a portion of those funds to help. Because after all, it's for the citizens of our city, uh, most of them, which are indigenous and they don't have the resources, uh, to go, uh, go places, so they utilize that clinic. And any way that we can, we can, uh, do anything to help that clinic financially, I think it's incumbent on us and true, uh, that we do all that we can. So that's something I'd like to see researched, uh, as to whether the guidelines of that grant would allow us to fund that clinic and a portion of it. And, uh, I know they don't have the money to match it.
That's the biggest concern is.
Yeah.
The guess is that one.
After we ask who owned it, because the city owned it.
No sir.
It would, it would be great if the city could match it in order to be able to fund that clinic to meet the needs of the citizens that have looked at us.
So both could, didn't get this grant?
Either.
We could.
It's gonna be one project, it's gonna be one project, so I believe it'll be for one, one entity. Um, this, uh, this, this, uh, this, uh, item, if voting for, will allow us to, uh, go out and see if we can hear it. And, uh, there will be no upfront cost for this unless the grant is approved. If the grant's approved, then, uh, it will come out of grant proceeds and the hospital district or the CEO Murray Clinic will provide the, uh, the match.
Is this only for the city or is this catered while?
For the city, so it'd only affect us.
So if you bought in a new piece of medical equipment, not in a rural area, that people could not use that? Cause one of them is strictly for the city.
If you drove to Crockett, you could use.
It's Crockett.
Okay, ju, it's just in Crockett.
But it's for the, oh, we can't.
For, for, so.
My question, so, so the grant, I'm sorry, so the grant goes specifically, I'm sorry.
This, this, it's not really an open.
Okay.
The agenda, I'm sorry.
The motion has been made, we, that, move forward with this, uh, made by Mike Marsh, seconded by Darrell Jones, everyone in favor? Motion number twelve, by forming monthly activity and section four through the hearing.
For movement back where we had a total of thirty-three calls. Only three of those calls inside city with no structural barriers and two structural barriers was, uh, down the canyon. There's a further report right down the call, I'm gonna run a few questions if I have any.
Now we'll have the police department, manpower and criminal, and stand for Detective Barry.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City MetLife. Report for February twenty eighteen, total manpower sixteen, they worked two thousand seven hundred twenty out of the period. Answered two hundred fifty-eight calls, served, worked eleven traffic accidents, made forty-six rounds, issued seventy-eight citations, placed, uh, twenty-five, seventy-one records, answered fourteen auto calls. There's a breakdown to the overall, if there are any questions, we have.
I'm definitely sure it's worth it.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
And then you'd like to, uh, make the presentation annual, uh, profiling?
Racial profiling. First man, we had a record of forty, also played two thousand nine hundred ninety-seven traffic accidents during the year of twenty seventeen. Uh, twelve hundred and twenty-two were citations, seventeen hundred and seventy-five were warnings. So you see a pretty portion of our warnings due to the ratio of citation. The main goal is for the public safety to get the word out to the people, that's why you see the, the larger number of warnings than the other. On the breakdown of the, uh, numbers, we had one thousand one hundred and twelve African-Americans sighted, we had fourteen hundred and ninety-seven Caucasians were wiped out. We had three hundred and fifty Hispanics, some dead for us now, if you have any other questions, we have.
Motion number fifteen, consider and approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crockett authorizing the submission of the grant application for the CID cell phone software and training to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division.
This is our usual bedcon grant that we apply for. This is a non-maximal grant, so we get a hundred percent of the funds without the city having anything for it, if we receive it. And this is for cell phone software, once we have a criminal case, we may, uh, get a cell phone from a suspect. We currently have to drive to Los Angeles, Ryan to get that doctor's note, so we can see what's happening. With the system, we'll be able to do it here in house, which will help us solve more cases than that one.
So you motion? The motion has been made by Darrell Jones and seconded by Butch Cowherd. Everyone in favor, show me. Thank you. Okay, considering, the next one is number sixteen, is consider and approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crockett, Texas authorizing the submission of a grant application for communication upgrade to the Office of the Governor and the Criminal Justice Division.
Also another bedcon grant through the Homeland Security Division. This will allow us to upgrade our communications of the police department without the city having, uh, to fund any of that if we get the grant. We're asking for a new console for dispatch to make our communications more clear as well as new handover deals for the office. That's a zero match for the city.
I made a motion that we consider approved.
The motion has been, uh, made by, uh, Orange Jackson, seconded by Darrell Jones. Everyone in favor, show hands. Okay, number seventeen, consider and approve appointment of a member to the Crockett Economic Industrial Development Corporation Board of Directors. At this time, I would like to nominate Robert Thompson to the, uh, to the board. Does anyone else have any, would you like to nominate?
We approve Robert Thompson to the board. Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Butch Cowherd, seconded by Darrell Jones. Everyone in favor? Show hands. Number eighteen, consider and approve city secretary, city secretary certification of unopposed candidate, precinct three. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Darrell Jones and seconded by Butch Cowherd. Everyone in favor? Show hands. Okay, number nineteen, consider and approve in accordance canceling the election of the City Council member in precinct three, scheduled for May the fifth, twenty eighteen. Okay, the motion has been made by Darrell Jones, seconded by Butch Cowherd. Everyone in favor?
There's no discussion about any of this? I'm sorry. There's no discussion? This is just, we're just here and you all are just voting?
Well, let me bring a little clarification to your question concerning that item. Precinct three is the seat that I currently serve in, and my seat is up for election, but there are no opponents, and so there's no point in having an election in this particular seat because there's no challengers there, so it's just part of the process, not having to go up there and vote for a candidate who has no opponent, and so.
I, we understand it, and this is just a clarification for proceedings.
Yes, go ahead.
For example, when you, when they made the motion to nominate somebody on the board, when you make your motion, don't you come to the floor and say, are there any nominations outside of the, and from the floor? Roberts rules of all, I'm just pointing a clarification. It's a closed meeting.
It's not a closed meeting, ma'am?
No.
It was opened up for this board. She just asked them, is there any other nominations? But for future reference, we really need to keep this.
Okay, I just want to reference, I appreciate it, I apologize, yes.
Thank you.
Number twenty, twenty, consider and approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crockett, Houston County, Texas, appointing the election officials for the May fifth, twenty eighteen general election, setting the rate of pay for the election officials, the minimum number of election clerks for the polling places, maximum number of election clerk for the polling place and designation of early voting ballot board.
Do we do the appointing now, or are we just? How about the way for a resolution?
The motion has been made by Butch Cowherd that we accept this, and Orange Jackson has made the second. Everyone in favor? Okay, thank you. Twenty-one, consider and approve designation of deputy early voting clerks.
I want to review that one. She reached out and laid for the final. Now, second motion.
Mike Marsh made the motion, and Orange Jackson made the second. Everyone in favor? Okay, now we're going to go to an executive session at this time. We accepted the evaluations for the election chief by a class, which was all very favorable, and. So it's it? Okay. So it's me, he's not a juror.